Please call the roll.
Winners?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dally?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 22, 2022. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on March 4, 2022. And approval of claims in the amount of $155,426.78 and payroll expenses of $184,901.84. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Agreed.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. First item is the wastewater committee, water wastewater committee meeting on February 28, 2022. Mr. Stelling?
We discussed, I believe, the water rail project and everything, that they were waiting on a plug that won't come in for quite some time to finish the wiring and I believe remove that from the project so we can close out that grant and take care of that. And I believe that that item did cost a whole lot.
Eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was a whole lot, so be easily moved. And then their discussion on our grant application, we did get a paper from Engineer Myers about things that were needed for our waters infrastructure, basically from the well field to the city, like the tank that's down there, the lines that come to town, issues with water meters, just some other lines and stuff that are flooded with higher hydrants on four-inch lines and they need properly to flow correctly. They're supposed to actually be on six-inch lines so we can't actually replace or fix a hydrant that's on the four-inch line. And so there's a lot of discussion on that and the cost and the matching amount. So, do you have any questions?
Council have any questions?
What were some of the amounts that they threw out there or what's there?
Total amount is around not quite 60 million, I believe, anywhere from a million gallon reservoir tank at the well field, I think it was like $2 million. The biggest part, I think it was like 20 to 30, 24 to 30 million dollars for like replacing some line coming into town. There's the communication, I believe it's, how do they communicate now? It's talking well field, it's telephone, and I can probably go to cell or something. Some type of different kind of system to where there's better communication between the wells and have, know the level of the tank and just some, and like I say, the booster pumps and different things like that, where they can monitor here instead of them actually have to drive down there and have to flip the switch to do something or whatever, they could actually do that here.
How far would drive that, I assume it's?
It's about 25 miles.
Okay.
Let me see, just kind of come from one end to the other, I think it included, how many miles of water lines that they talked about replacing there?
We talked about replacing a water line from the well field to town, I'm trying to look here to see, with 24-inch water line in some of the areas where we already have, like where we've replaced water line already, maybe just replacing some of the subsequent lines because as it sits now, in some areas we have three water lines come into town, some areas we have two water lines come into town, and we've replaced, like we've just replaced that 6,500 feet out there. So some of the areas we've already made repairs to the lines, and we wouldn't be repairing, replacing those with 24-inch line, but anywhere else where there hasn't been upgrades to that system, we might be putting 24-inch line in, but it was.
I think another taken item was drilling the offset wells.
Seventeen.
Seventeen offset wells, I think they're priced at 170,000?
177,000 a piece.
Yeah, and then there was, like, big thing is like the water lines here in town, I can't remember, they had it feet and I divided it up, I can't remember, it was several miles, six to more miles or something, but it was quite a bit of replacing water lines and stuff that would, because a lot of our lines, the infrastructure is old, I mean like through the time, forgot where valves are, valves are either left open or shut, and so there maybe should have been a loop in the line that doesn't exist to where it would help pressure wise, like I said, some of that deals with the hydrants on four-inch line, which used to be fine and dandy, but now it's something that they want on six-inch lines and so.
So we have a lot of hydrants that can't be replaced, maybe are leaking because they're sitting on four-inch line, and so we would have to go in and put in six-inch line underneath those hydrants and connecting to whatever the distribution line is. And so that's, that's a lot.
No, but I guess, how long of a, how long of a project is that looking at?
Well.
Well, it would probably be multiple years, definitely. If we were awarded the grant, we would have up to
2026.
2026 to complete projects. The grant is, they closed the grant deadline as a, or they will close it on March 31st, and so we'll wait to see how the legislature wants to handle that funding, how they distribute it, allocate it, whatever. For all, they've had far more requests for money than they have money to dole out, so.
Is 20% match? Is 20% match on our side if whatever we're doing?
There's no.
There's no match, there's no match requirement, but their priorities are going to be projects that they think are going to actually happen.
Oh, why were we talking about that thought that we could use somewhere past?
Well, no, they want to see what we've done, and then we've included that, but there's no match requirement, so they, they called that stacking expenses, and so we got to count two years worth, two, almost three years worth of what we've spent on water wastewater infrastructure, and we'll get to count some projected expenditures as well, personnel, anything related to what we've been doing to help our own water infrastructure and what we will do to help our own water infrastructure moving forward, so.
Basically, we've been actively trying to improve it on our own, it's not just set in wait for money.
You know, timing wise, we'd probably look a little bit better if the water tower had been two years later, but it's still in our report and that's, you know, that's good.
It shows that we.
It shows that we've had an ongoing commitment to improving the infrastructure.
And so we're hoping for that to be fully funded from that grant or just partially?
We, we would like to see what they come back with, I mean that's.
I would like it to be fully funded. I do not want to pay, when we need to do it, I would like somebody, these are our tax dollars anyway, they might as well pay for our projects, in my opinion.
But every town's got that idea too.
Yeah, I will, our town's more important. Sorry.
I said that.
Anything else for Randy? Okay, thank you, sir. Next item is the ordinance meeting on March 1.
Randy?
Lot of discussion on the business ordinance, and I believe basically it was, we kind of went over a few things, but biggest thing was, I believe, we want to look at the fee schedule overall for the city, some of that affects the business ordinance, a lot of it affects just throughout the whole city and everything, so I'm hoping we get that on the, the next one, I think there's other things too coming up, but like we just mainly were discussing the business ordinance. I can't remember, I can't remember all the other detailed stuff that we.
Not at the, at the ordinance committee predominantly all we discussed was the business ordinance.
Yeah.
I guess, I didn't know if we had talked to him about the land idea and the idea of being able to, I guess that was the city attorney been able to look at the ordinance?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we discussed that, where like if someone goes out, maybe something to identify, some like a land identification and stuff that they're out, maybe soliciting or this or that, so that way, kind of like you said, to get away from the deal, kind of like maybe the Wendy Ford deal to where.
So we can identify.
They kind of vetted a little bit to where hopefully they're doing what they're supposed to and stuff.
Would we determine that that was predominantly going to be procedure and policy, more so not written into the ordinance?
Right.
That's what I, I guess specifically the idea of being able to offer, I guess, I don't want to use the word ban, but for people who are not, who are going illegally door to door to sell or something like that, to prevent, it's a common scam, I think, from my understanding, to go door to door and case somebody's house under the guise of selling some sort of legitimate service, like let me inspect your water tank so I see if you have a lot of nice things in your garage to come back later. It happens at a lot of small communities, even on a county. But has the city attorney had a chance to look at the ordinance yet?
I've looked at the ordinance, we're going to need to meet with the committee though, because there's some specific things within the ordinance that probably need clarification and like all ordinances, when you make a sweeping change, it changes some aspects of some other parts of our ordinances to make sure they're consistent, so I've got some questions that I think we need to meet, the committee and I need to meet.
Any other questions regarding the ordinance committee? All right, personnel committee meeting on March 8. Dana?
We met with Brooke for the majority of that meeting, going over a fitness or health policy or plan for the city that is very critical to ability for like, I think T-Set grants is what we're looking at for that, and we have to have one in place. We met most of what she presented as kind of a rough draft and discussed some of the potential changes to that, or things that we had concerns on over that, mostly dealt with the types of snacks and beverages that were provided and specific caloric and sodium intakes and things like that. We also had a brief review, that we did go into a little more depth, I believe. Finance committee, Greg included on that, went over our possible cola and what those look like, based on the different percentages, as well as with step increases, and I believe that pretty well covered everything that we discussed unless I'm overlooking something.
The only other thing I would say, we had a quick conversation on what the union had brought into negotiations, which we'll talk about later on.
Yeah.
Any questions from the council? Thank you. Next item is the Parks and Building Committee meeting on March 9.
Okay, we discussed the possible, or started discussing having a maintenance person to help take care with some of the smaller repairs on the city buildings. That started in discussion. Most of the time was dealt with the master plan with Kimley Horn. We talked about the DISGoff in Hatfield Park giving Kimley Horn to be part of that or the information for the DISGoff park. And then also we started talking about the master plan, combining the rec park and the Hatfield park, and we were going to send that to the ordinance committee about combining the rec park board and the Hatfield board to have one board that takes care of all parks in the community. That's, that is going to go to the rec board and then to the ordinance committee. So that was part of the discussion. We also talked about the roof on the gym out at the rec park came up with a leak, and there's going to be meetings with the engineer at some point to see how those will result. And I can't think of anything else.
Council have any questions?
This is the gym we just re-roofed, so we're bringing up the RC, or we should still be within the timeframe that they.
Yes, Courtney and I have been, that's one of the things on my, on my list of things to update on. Courtney and I have met with Tier One project manager, we've had two project managers during that project, both are no longer with the company for some of the reasons that we had concerns about, so we're working with someone new, and they were up last week, and we anticipate them being up again this week. We've got one of the recs and our board members who's familiar with metal buildings is sitting in on those meetings as well, so hoping to make some progress on that.
I was also going to ask, was there anything specifically outlined on what the future plan is that Kimley Horn is doing for the park, like what features they're adding and stuff like that, or how they would better integrate that into the pool?
Right now, it seems to be more of a planning stage of getting the foundation built before they can do that, and there was a discussion on, tell me if I get this right, but we've got two different entities, you've got the pool and then you've got the parks. And a lot of the discussion was on what they call the future plan, or what's the word? I want to think of, anyway, of those two deals. Once those are approved, I believe, then we can start different additions and ideas and that sort of thing, which will then come from the pool committee.
So, so Kimley Horn's under contract right now for the pool design, and starting tomorrow, they're going to be doing public input meetings to where they, they take all the feedback from the public and then they throw that into the plan for the pool. So they don't presently have a plan for the park, but the idea, the conversation was around their proposal, which is in, in our packet here, and their plans for developing those plans.
Sure enough, I guess, I was just comparing the process to how we originally began the pool one, you know what I mean, we kind of did independently drumming up that support and stuff like that to get an overall vision for it, and then introduced Kimley Horn, and I didn't know if there was, you know what I mean, like if hindsight 2020, we would have gone back and probably engaged them before we began that process, or if we liked the way that process with the pool went.
I do not like the way that process with the pool went.
And I also say, sorry, I'm going to cut you off.
Go ahead.
That, you know, one of the things in the, the Land and Water Conservation Grant that we're applying for, that they, they fund those in stages, and so I think the thought process from the pool committee is that we are, that that would be the next phase of what we're looking at is moving into the park, and so kind of a natural progression of things, and that, I mean, it is my opinion.
The grant application looks more attractive if there is a, a multiple phase project that the land and water conservation fund can get behind rather than a single project one day. And so to, the more development we have in our plans at the time that we apply for this grant, the better our application looks.
Fair enough, and so if I remember right, I think that was discussed, that what we're approving in this grant needs to be part of the overall pool design so that we can get the water and land conservation grant, apply for that, or am I misunderstanding?
No, you're right, it makes our application look better.
Yeah. Fair enough. I just, you know what I mean, the idea of paying money for a plan is a good idea, but you're paying for a lot of words and paper with $8,000 worth, not that I think, I think it needs to process more like the.
Any other questions regarding Parks and Building? All right, library board meeting on March 14.
Yep. It was a good meeting, we actually had somebody, a guest, I think a student, doing a report for class, but a guest nonetheless, which I think has probably been the first one in quite some time for the library meeting, but certainly the first time for me. We did not actually have the financial data report in for that meeting, so I assume we'll kind of go over it at the next one. We talked about the E-Rate 471 filing, which is the, the good deal that we get from the state to offset the cost of the internet at the library. They discussed kind of, they had turned in the budget process for the budget meeting that we had with the city on Saturday, and kind of talked a little bit about what they applied for there. There was also an update on the magazine area, and the youth, the youth library has been kind of reorganized, organized, I went down there and kind of saw that, they've kind of pulled things against the wall and kind of opened it up and got rid of some of the larger furniture that was taking up space. And I think that, oh yeah, sorry, the major thing that we talked about was the, the technology plant, which we went over and approved there, and it was pretty open, and I think there was not anything that had to be legally sought out, it's just a good idea to plan for what the library wants to do in the future, so, pretty easy, and we proved that, and that's about it.
Council have any questions? All right, thank you, Taylor. Next item is the airport board meeting on March 14. We had, the majority of our discussions centered really around two items. One was the need for budget amendments, and so those will be prepared for council approval, but because, I reported previously that we signed an agreement with Commercial Aviators Association, something like, Aeronautics, CAA.
Corporate Aviation Association.
We just referred to the acronym enough, and I don't know what it stands for, but that has driven quite a bit of traffic to our airport, so much so that our, our budgeted fuel expenditures, as well as our budgeted fuel revenue, as well as our personnel salaries has been not adequate. So the board voted to increase the budget for salaries by $15,000, and this is for this current fiscal year, increase the fuel expenditure budget by $85,000, and increase the fuel revenue budget by $88,000. So, the, I mean, the thing is, we're going to continue to purchase and sell fuel as long as people show up out there, and so if we're going to do that, we need to adjust the budget so that we're in compliance. That was most of the conversation. We did briefly discuss one of our CDs that was up for renewal or cashing out, and they decided to reinvest that in another CD at six months at the best rate we could find. Finance committee, he found on a six-month rate, .61.
Wow.
Yeah, so, so that's what we did. We didn't know it was going to be that high when we approved it at all, but that's what it was, so.
Where did you find that?
I didn't ask him where it was. Was it community? Oh, yeah, he did tell me that. But yeah, .61 on that CD, and the rest of our meeting largely focused around the donation that we received for lobby furniture and looking at, you know, different furniture options. We did approve some chairs and some table bases, and I was, I was tasked, Homestead several years ago bought tables for the dining room, and the tabletops that were sent by the supplier originally were wrong, and they didn't want us to send them back, they didn't want to pay for the freight to send them back and all that, so they told us to keep them. So I offered those up, they didn't cost anybody anything, and they're not of use for the Homestead, so, but the idea was that we would be able to possibly use those at the airport, went and looked at them, in storage, they hadn't fared as well as I thought they had, and so they'll probably have to, we'll probably have another meeting or two to talk about more furniture that we're going to buy, so. That, other than hearing reports from the manager, that is, those are all the action items. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
That budget amendment will be on the next account, so I just didn't have time to get everything ready for this meeting, so.
Okay. Next item is the Public Safety Committee meeting on March 15.
Yeah, we, we kind of, I guess the majority of honestly was talking about the ordinances, both one for the vehicle, ATV, scooter, and I can't recall all their large.
Yeah, anything that's not a regular car.
Yeah, basically, kind of going over that, I think we've, I think we kind of narrowed it down, I think the main thing that we wanted to go back before we took it was the idea of adding insurance as a possibility of requiring at least the minimum of state liability if you are, I think that, and we set some requirements if it goes over a certain mileage per hour or if you're carrying a passenger, and kind of just the idea of, just because it's, some of those vehicles can be just as dangerous as real vehicles on the road, depending on how fast or not being careful, so way to protect pedestrians and stuff. Then the other thing I think we kind of talked about was the parking ordinance a little bit, and then basically I think we've, our goal there was kind of to remove some of the more archaic things, like I think the good example was that the way the ordinance now is if you go home for the weekend and you park your vehicle and it's, what was the size, is it one ton?
One ton.
One ton, and you park your vehicle on the side of road, you get home Friday and you don't want to move your vehicle till Monday, you violated the parking ordinance. So I think we're trying to expand, get rid of that language and potentially kind of expand it so that it doesn't necessarily, it focuses more on how you're a hindrance to the street, not necessarily certain vehicles and laws and stuff like that, which I did do some research on that and took a measure of that in some street, and the idea of making it to where if you didn't restrict it through a certain pass-through so that at least 10 passable feet between any ongoing traffic in one lane or something like that, but, and you can have good footage for that. And then we kind of briefly touched on the 522, oh sorry, the EMS rate increase and stuff, and how we're going back to there, I think we wanted to look at the, the insurance minimums that we would receive from the three major providers and talk to all the billing company about that to make sure that we are getting the most out of that and not, and if we are, then be happy with that, I guess. I think that pretty much covered it. If there's any questions?
Council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is the Finance Committee meeting on March 4, March 16, March 21, 2022. Connor?
Okay, I'll start with the March 4 meeting. Main discussion was just discussion on the budget retreat, how we were going to plan for that, to get that set up so it could be the most efficient possible, and that was the main discussion there. Last week's meeting on the 16th, we talked about the cost of living adjustment, had discussion on that, what we wanted to do there with, especially with all of the inflation and rising costs, and the best way to handle that. And we discussed capital improvements and the issues that we've been having with equipment and, you know, passing ideas and information back and forth on the best way to handle that situation. And then the meeting at noon today was with the auditors, got updates, had discussion with them, that was a kind of a Q and A, if anybody had, had questions on anything, so they can kind of get the ball rolling, so.
I will add, the auditors did indicate that preliminarily, of course they're not finished yet, but preliminarily, we've improved our position considerably over the course of the previous, or in comparison to the previous fiscal year. Again, what they're looking at right now is fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, so they're not looking at anything this year, but they are, they're not auditing anything for this year, but they have looked at our financial statements, they're waiting on some more financial statements from Angelica, but they did indicate that, that it, they felt like there may be an opportunity that when they put in their report, whether or not the, the city is an ongoing concern because of their finances, that they could probably modify that from previous years.
Our funds are no longer ongoing concern, potentially here. Our funds are no longer ongoing concern, potentially here, but.
They said what we're doing is, is good and keep doing it. What about the petition audit, what was that?
The petition audit, I called and visited with them, so the Epic Schools audit is still in front of our audit and is ongoing. And as soon as they get that wrapped up, they'll start on ours. But everything is done, it's just in the review, like they have to write the report, it needs to be reviewed and approved. So, we're just kind of waiting for that, that piece.
I did ask the auditor if he had any pull with the state audit conference and he expressed that he did not. Any other questions regarding Finance Committee meetings? All right, thank you. Next item is the Mayor's Report. You've been seeing me in your meetings, the committee meetings, it's about all I've been doing lately. So, I don't really have a lot to add as far as what, things you don't already know. Except I will say that it will be immediately following our, our next council meeting, it'll be that week that Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunt will be in town from April 20th to 22nd. We will, we'll be, if you haven't been familiar with the Turkey Hunt in the past, it's an, it's an economic development tool that has been used in our community for decades now, 30 some years. And there'll be, I think at this time, there are 13 state, regional, national, international corporation, and the corporations and their representatives visiting Alba for the Turkey Hunt this year. And it's a little bit less than in years past, but it's more than we had last, no, we had it last year.
You had the same last year.
COVID really took a hit, hit out on our, our numbers for the Turkey Hunt. But, you know, the Turkey Hunt is how, you know, corporations like Martin Marietta and, and, you know, maybe there's been several corporations that have kind of set up shop in our area after having participated in our Turkey Hunt, so. They will be, that's coming up, so stay tuned. You will, you should receive an invitation to one of the dinners where, when the Lieutenant Governor will be in town and other dignitaries.
Please make sure you let me know if you're RSVPing, so if we have a call, I can have a meeting agenda posted, so. We typically haven't had a problem with that in years past, but I just want to make sure if you do RSVP, please let me know.
I'm happy to answer any questions. Next item is the Business Manager's Report, Angelica.
I feel like this February was the longest month ever. We had our employee appreciation lunch earlier in the month, I wanted to tell you all thank you for those of you who were able to come out and help serve that, I think was really well received and I appreciate everyone coming out for that. I wanted to talk about the ARC roof, you know, Daniel, we talked, you know, the company is coming, coming out and hopefully we can get those issues resolved. They, based on the conversation that we had last week, they weren't exactly proud of how things had gone and so hoping to make amends and make things better there, so I'm really looking forward to get the opportunity to correct that. The high school, the water project, water line project up at the high school, it's in the end stages. We're working with True Solutions to get, I know they laid some sod. Some of that will have to, have to come back after everything starts growing and make sure things are progressing along with it, they should there. And the project is completed, so we haven't closed it out yet, but it is completed this time, so.
I assume it isn't staying open until they've verified that everything is good with the arts?
Yeah, make sure everything is going good. We had a few rough patches with them, with the contractor a little bit, but I feel like Drake and I and Bill Myers came up. We all met with the contractor last week and I feel like, I think we're in a good place there. So, as long as the grass grows whenever it starts raining or we're going to, we have plans to water some, to water it, make sure that it gets plenty of water as well when it starts coming in, so.
Are the property owners okay with the resolution? Because I know that was an issue.
Drake has, is working on making sure we're in the right spot there, that's it. So, if there are any of those property owners that, that don't feel that and you hear that, please let me know. I know it doesn't look real great right now, but hopefully when it, when it starts growing, that's going to, this should change, so. We submitted our application for additional ARP grant monies, so hopefully that, let's see how that goes, we'll talk about that. Just a reminder that there is a pool public input meeting tomorrow evening at the Tech Center at 6 o'clock. So, if you are able to come, please come and Darren and his crew will be there as well, so we would encourage everyone to come and participate. I know Dr. Decker has reached out to many of you council members on the committees and make sure if you have, if you are able to come to the meetings during the day, I know that your input is really appreciated there as well, I think she's reached out to Parks and Building. Who else? I know she's reached out to several board members as well, so if you have questions or wonder when you're supposed to be there, you don't know, just let me know and I can, I can help you with that.
When does that meet tomorrow? What time and where?
The public input meeting is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM.
And where is that going to be held?
At Northwest Tech.
And there, there'll be meetings all day long at Northwest Tech tomorrow, so.
She sent an email.
Council members, I'd say just feel free to drop in at any of them.
Yeah, it starts at 1:00, 1:30 and then I'll go until a little bit of a break before the meeting. And then we have some more meetings on Wednesday and then at the school Wednesday afternoon, so two, two pretty full days.
Do you open times, Kelly?
Much excellent.
Yeah.
March 22nd tomorrow, 1:30 to 2:45 is the city staff or any of us that can go. Three to four, they're inviting Northwestern staff and their students. Six to eight is the general public in the seminar room. March 23rd, 8:30 to 9:00, they're going to the pool site to visit it. 9:45 to 11:45 will be Training Room B for community leaders. 1:15 to 2:45, they're meeting with the Alba High and Alba Middle School students at the high school. And we just need to be sure, I know Kay's reached out and contacted everybody at your appropriate times, I don't, I would like to make sure we don't have a call and we did not post a special meeting, so.
Five of them show up, somebody leave, please.
And honestly, if you just touch base with me, if you're planning on going to one, that would be, I mean, that'd be easiest. I appreciate everybody coming to budget retreat on Saturday, I felt like that was a very productive meeting. We haven't had one of those for a couple of years now, just COVID and everything else we've had going on, it's just not happened. You guys give me your input, but I really felt like it went well, I know Steph really appreciated y'all being there for that. A lot of work they put in, I really wanted to tell my staff as well, think, you know, I appreciate everything that they have done. Saturday evening, we had a fire hydrant, Southern Oklahoma that was leaking. Our water department this year, man, they've just gone above and beyond. Talked to the general manager at McDonald's and, you know, we were initially planning to fix that on Saturday during the day, or excuse me, Sunday during the day. However, that was a very busy time for them and she just was very concerned about what that would do for their business on that, on that busy weekend day. And so, I asked the crew if they'd be willing to come in and do it in the evening instead and they were there. They showed up, shut the water for 10:30 that night and they had water turned back on to that block by 5:30 the next morning. So, the donut shop and McDonald's are pretty much back to fairly normal business hours that day. So, that went probably the smoothest water project that we've had this year, it went pretty smoothly. And, and I just can't tell them thank you enough that they came in, worked through the night that day, it worked out really well. And then we had a fire south of our transfer station, Burn Line side, our fire department and the, the other surrounding community fire, our volunteer departments. They all showed up last night, yesterday afternoon and evening and they got that out. And obviously with the rain today, that will help a lot, making sure that all those hotspots are out. So, just want to say thanks to those guys for, for being there and helping out. We talked about the auditors already, I feel like staff in the business office, they did an amazing job. We crammed, because of all the things we had going on this week, our auditors are usually here two to three days onsite. They worked hard last week to get information to them and we busted our tails today, making sure we could get all the information the auditors needed and they were able to make that trip in one visit today, one day today, so that we wouldn't impact the next events going on the next several days. So, can't tell, I'm pretty proud of my staff, this week we've had a lot of, a lot of things happen and they've done a really great job making sure that things got done, so. Any questions for me?
I've got a lot of people asking if the city was burning tree limbs.
So, it started in our tree limb file pile, we believe it's currently under investigation and, and we'll figure out what for sure happened. But we, we were not intentionally burning there, so.
Any other questions? All right. Next item is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Anybody want to make any comments? I'll give you two minutes. All right. Item made is new business, don't believe we have anything that qualifies as new business to bring up. Okay. And number nine is discussion and action to approve the city manager to sign an agreement with Kimley Horn to provide master planning and design services for Hatfield and Bud Rose Parks' master planning in an amount not to exceed $82,800. We started touching on this, Darren, you can, yes.
So, do you guys have the scope in front of you?
It's in there.
Okay, because I have a few extra copies.
If you have it, that'd be great, I didn't print those copies for them, it was in the packet, but I didn't print them, obviously, Darren.
It's all the, should be exactly the same, so. I did the stapling on those, so hopefully they're, they're all complete, so. Perfect amount, all right. So, yeah, we, to start the discussion, we can kind of do it similar to what we did, the, the pool project as far as kind of going through each step. So, there's two parks included in this, one's Hatfield where the pool's at and then the other one was Bud Rose. And this came up from just the discussions with the pool committee, talking about the grants. Hey, let's, let's think about these other areas of the Hatfield Park and then Bud Rose to, to get some ideas in place. So, as we're thinking about grants going forward, it would all be there, there'd be cost projections, priorities, that kind of thing. So, that's, that's kind of where this came out of, was through some of that discussion. So, we developed a, a master plan to tackle that, that approach. So, task one is all the effort included for Hatfield Park master plan. So, task 1.1 is just the kickoff meeting setting, you know, we, we talked about what are some of the goals and that kind of thing. We have some public input and focus group engagement in there, but the kickoff meeting would also be that time of what's the vision of this, from the city as far as what, what do you want to have included in there? That'll also set the, the timeline, the milestones. You know, we see this as, you know, if, we could potentially follow the similar path with the pool to, to get it completed. So, in September, when you're applying for the grant for the pool, this would be a part of it, so they could see the, here's phase one, this is what we want the money for first, the pool, but then phase, you know, however many other phases there are, would be included, so they could kind of see that timeline. And so, task 1.2, public engagement, so we, we talked a lot about, well, how much, what's the appropriate amount of, of public engagement for this? And, you know, a big part of the grant applications is to hear from the public to make sure the community's being heard. So, we developed a strategy where we would have focus group meetings, similar, it's kind of similar to what we're doing now with the pool. But, you know, it could be different focus groups for the different parks, depending on what we're trying to capture. You know, we, we listed a few potential groups there with athletics, parents and youth, senior connectivity, that kind of thing. In addition to that, we included two community meetings. The first one is really the information gathering, very similar to the pool project where you, we go, what we like to do, especially on these park projects, is go to an event. You know, I know with the, the pool, it's kind of, we're, we're working around and people come to us at the Northwest Center. But for, if we're talking about a park, it's nice to go to an event at the park, so people are there and they understand what's out there and what are some of the ideas that could be used to improve it. So, that's what we proposed in here. So, the first one is, is gathering that information, the second one would be, after we develop the master plan, coming back and saying, here's what we, we have, what do you think? What are some of your priorities phasing, that kind of thing? In addition to that, we've included some online surveys, we can help the city with developing some surveys as needed to, together and put that way for, for people that may not attend those community meetings. So, that's essentially the, the public engagement piece of it. Does there any, does that make sense, any questions on that task? Okay. So, task 1.3, draft site master plan phase, this is where we start digging into what's out there already. You know, what's, what's the vehicular circulation, pedestrian, what amenities do you have out there? And then what would you like to see? So, once we hear from the public, hear from the city, we'll start kind of matching that up and identifying what's this big vision? What does this park look like once it's fully developed out? We'll develop landscape conceptual plans, you know, entrance signage, just kind of the theme and all of that. You know, looking at restrooms, what's needed, there's a lot of prefab restroom buildings that we've used in the past, so looking at some of those options. Obviously, cost will be provided with that and then, then start looking at the phasing of how, how it can be broken out based on grant opportunities, funding types and what's a immediate priority and what's a priority that's maybe a few years down the road. And then we'll develop the, the cost from that, so. And then in the end, you'll have a, basically a, a master plan that will identify everything that's gone into it. Here's the, the developed plan, here's the cost and here's the, the phasing opportunities. And here are some grants that we see that might fit each of those pieces. So, that captures, you know, I may have kind of combined 1.3 and 1.4, but basically it's, it's the draft master plan, develop feedback and then finalize the, the master plan. 1.5, and this was something that was requested and it's not necessarily anything that's required, but we can provide a 3D visual, visualization of the park. So, when you, especially when we're developing the pool, pool's a pretty visual thing of what is it going to look like? So, the pool with the park improvements could all be combined and do some perspectives of, of that. So, again, it tells a little more of the story versus a, a plan view rendering, you get a little more of a perspective there. So, that was included in 1.5. And then, task two is Bud Rose Park. So, essentially it's exactly the same as task one, so we don't have to go through all the tasks, but it's, it's for Bud Rose. And the, we've identified that the public engagement piece would be combined. So, when we do the public input for Hatfield, we do it, Bud Rose at the same time, so it's one, one time thing. So, that's, there's a little bit on, when you look at the price, Bud Rose is. So that's, there's a little bit on, when you look at the price, Bud Rose isn't necessarily as complicated as Hatfield, but also that public engagement piece, understanding that's combined together, so there's a little savings there instead of doing it twice. So that is Bud Rose. So on the page 11 identifies the, the fees for, for each one of those tasks, and then combined together. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I guess in the previous one, the price is determined by the overall percentage of the project.
Right.
What do we, how do we determine this one without a project?
It's more, on this one, I mean, we, we put together our spreadsheet, you know, how much effort do we anticipate each task to take, and go from there, and, and looking at the park and saying, okay, how complicated, you know, what's, what's going to be involved there? So there's really not a set number, what, what a master plan, it's, it's more of man hours. I mean, it's all man hours, even on the other one, but at least it gives you some sort of comparison, but the pool, this one's a little, a little different.
Is there an estimation on hour, man hours and then the price?
I, I could, I can provide that. I'd have to go back and look, I mean, it varies, you know, rates depending on personnel. I mean, you know, most of the time, it's a hundred and thirty-ish an hour, probably average for man hour effort, so I don't know what, do the, do the math on all that, but that's, that's probably a good number to kind of divide it out, but if you want to, I mean, I can provide the breakdown per task, you know, I mean, that's typically, on lump sums, we, when we bill, we bill as a percentage of completion, so we don't necessarily bill it by the hour, but on hourly projects.
The, the quality of the project will get out of it.
Right, yeah.
And I probably should, in that metaphor, when I probably should have said, it's a lot to pay for a piece of art that you're creating if we don't necessarily know the like the art that's coming out of it.
Right, no, absolutely, and that's, I mean, we, we totally understand that, and we've done a lot of the park master plans, and I mean, it is, it's a lot of money to spend on an idea that's on a piece of paper, and I, I understand that. It's, it's just the benefit of, once it's out there, people's had a chance to, you know, express what they want to see, and then there's actual dollars applied to it. I think that's the biggest thing, is getting that estimate. So when you know, when you're applying for a grant, you know what you're really asking for, other than, we have an idea and we don't know what it costs, kind of thing.
When the, when the plan is developed, do, do we, do we have any, like, discussion through the process of what the overall cost of the project to complete would be? You know, because the community or, or us could sit and tell you all day long all of these great things that we would want, and then there's what's realistically within the budget. So I'd hate to see a plan come out of this that is not feasible financially for the city.
Yeah, no, as we go through the, the process, and really through the public engagement too, it's, it's a little more of what's a, what's a priority, because every, like I said, everything costs money, and you can design the world if you can't afford it, so it's, what's a pri, what do you really want to have? And then maybe what's a secondary thing, so then you can start identifying, well, this is feasible because I can, we can build this. These other things, yeah, they're nice, but they may not be attainable now. Maybe that's a, a secondary thing. So as we're, as we're going through the plan, we'll identify, okay, if there's a trail, we can give you, well, here's an approximate cost, or here's a linear foot cost, so as we're working through it, we'll know where we're at, versus getting to the end, and it's a thirty million dollar park, and that does us no good, you know.
I think, you know, unlike the pool, I mean, the pool is a, it, it can be broken up a little bit, but the pool is basically a single ticket thing.
Right.
And, you know, the park is something where features can be added, as long as you sequence things properly to, to not screw up the rest of the, the plan. I mean, you could probably sequence things a lot differently and more strategically with the park than you could, either one of the parks than you could the pool.
Yeah, yeah.
When is the fee due? Like, I know we're not, this isn't like the immediate, so are you guys, if we sign the contract, are we having to pay the eighty-two eight now, or is it just once we start?
It's just a percentage of completion, so, you know, as we work through task one, it'll have the invoice will show task 1.1 percentage, so yeah, it, it'll be very similar to the other one where it's just broken out.
Not so, but one of them.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's a percentage of completion.
Start date.
I mean, we can get started, I mean, ideally, we would want to get started fairly quickly just so we can fall close to the pool project, but, I mean, it can be started anytime, I mean, we're, it's running a little bit independent of that, so.
So if we were to start today from a budgeted, it's not budgeted for?
Correct.
So I guess what, just out of curiosity, is it possible to have this project asked at one of tomorrow's pool committee meetings, just to see what people think, and what they would like to see in the overall plan, just to get their support or ideas about it?
So as far as like what elements?
Yeah, what elements they'd like to see, and if they have realistic goals and expert, expectations for the price that we're setting in this, just in the idea of, if we can't budget it now, then I didn't, what does it hurt to put it off on one mark, but maybe I'm correct.
Well, I mean, I think the main thing for tomorrow is we don't want to get totally sidetracked on this, like, we want to, it's all about the pool, I mean, that's, that's what we focused around, so I really, I mean, we can ask some general questions of pool, what other things go with a pool, you know, like what other amenities maybe that could occur at Hatfield?
Maybe I'm just too literal, but maybe is it worth having, did a separate meeting, kind of like we did the very first pool meeting at the tech center, just to see what people think? Not, I, I think this is, seems like the best way to do it in that park, has it needed an overall vision for its improvement for a very long time, it rose by even longer than that since my childhood, I remember, but I just didn't know the idea of seeing what other people have, because I, I have not heard as much native feedback or anything like that that Daniel had heard about that, or people have heard.
A lot of it helped with the, the budgeting. I, I think that, I think there's a lot of community support for the development of parks, I think we've heard that, I think the concern is, is where is that eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars coming from? So I guess that would be my question to you, Angelica, is where is that eighty-two thousand eight hundred come from if we sign this today?
It, it, it's not in this year's budget, and, and so if we have heard this contract that, you know, we would be expected to approve it in our upcoming budget, the, I, there's a lot of conversations that I think we, we need to have, and part of that is with regard to what Greg brought up in his report, is the establishment of Parks and Recreation Commission. And because Parks and Recreation Commission does have those resources, but when we do that, I mean, I, I think I would suggest, certainly it'd be council, you know, decision, but I would suggest that we, if, if we're going to make a transition from general fund operated, pool, parks, park maintenance, and all of those type things, if, if we're going to put that on Rec Park, who would then be the Parks and Rec, you know, we probably have a financial obligation from the general fund for a period of time that we need to, you know, take care of some of their issues, and, and maybe this is a way that we fulfill that obligation, and then we have more of a clean transition. I, I think ultimately, you know, the decisions that we make are, are the answer to the question, where does it come from? And so, you know, that question doesn't have an answer at this time, but we need to figure that out.
I'm apprehensive approving a contract, we don't know how we're going to pay for it. I feel like we need to have those conversations before this is approved.
Well, this just allows her to sign the contract, but if we don't give direction, you know, if there's, basically, we don't, don't have a discussion to find out where the money's coming from, basically, we've, we've told her since, at that time, you know, she knows herself that we can't sign the contract and stuff, but at what point would you think that first billing would be, to think we're starting the process fairly quick? I mean, you do start doing stuff, wouldn't?
Yeah, I mean, it was by the time we get a meeting set up and all, I mean, early into April, so, I mean, the net first billing wouldn't be probably end of May. I mean, by the time we, we do our, we do our pre-bill, like, on pre-bills, at the end of the month, and then use of that invoice to go out until late the next month, and then obviously there's that time to pay too. So, I mean, you're, you're looking at, at probably end of May, and, you know, we can tell us when you want us to bill it, and, I mean, we can, we can do it that way too, I mean, we have some flexibility, especially in the beginning.
What time period do you expect this time?
Like, overall time?
Yeah, overall.
I mean, I did, we can, we can make it run as long as we need to, but ideally, it would be done, it would be finished about the same time as the pool is done, just, or when the grant application is done for the pool, so we can show both, especially Hatfield, I mean, Bud Rose could be maybe a little behind because that's kind of a separate thing, but that would be September, which is what we're seeing now, I mean, it, it could slide a little later, depending on that grant, grant applications, do you?
Contract, I don't know about the contract with, if the contract's just signed, and we don't find a means to fund it, are we obligated to those funds?
I mean, you just tell us when to go.
So we just never say go?
Yeah, I mean, just basically, no, just proceed, you know, just tell us, we're ready to go, so.
That's, that's what I'm asking, we wouldn't be. I, I still would know if I'm on board with approving it without knowing where those funds are, but we wouldn't be encumbering funds, is what he's saying, because we haven't actually initiated the project. So until they've done work, albeit, we signed the contract, Angelica says go, we've now encountered funds.
I thought it was on the, the agreements of payment, not necessarily on the beginning of the project. The commitment of payment is enough to ensure encumbrance.
You sign the contract, and I don't know whether there's a provision in there, I didn't see, that says they don't do any work until she pulls the trigger. So if they do work, they expect pay.
Right.
You have to be able to have the building to pay them.
I, I feel like we need to have the discussion of where the eighty-two eight comes from before we approve the contract. I think I still sit on that?
So when do we have that discussion? I mean, we're all here.
Now, can I ask a question? The grant process stops for Hatfield Park if that's not approved, correct?
No, 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 no. I mean, in fact, I, I, we need to have a well-planned out vision for anything that we're going to, to say is a priority, and, and so I, that needs to happen. The extent of that planning that goes in, in, that is completed by the time we apply for the pool grant is going to impact the, the, the decision, or the, the score that we get when the land and water conservation fund looks and reviews our application. The, the better, the, the, the more clearly we have defined a long-term plan, that's just going to give them a better idea on how, how our project has, has long-range benefits. And so I, it would be great if we could approve this and, and get moving on it, and I think at some point, we are going to need to, but we, we can't sit on this if we want to be really, if we're not going to commit to long-term planning, we don't need to put in the land and water conservation fund that we're going to commit to long-term projects.
I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to commit to this, but I feel like before we can commit to this, what money are we spending on it? We currently have no money to spend on this. There's nothing budgeted for it, nothing allocated for it, and we don't know where that comes from.
So do we say we're going to go to the ADA? I mean, that's not on this week's agenda.
And that's, that's hard, I mean, I couldn't say that today, because I haven't reviewed that in preparations for this, because my, my, I was not expecting this to start immediately.
When is the deadline for the, that water conservation grant?
So we were told a few weeks ago, September. It could slide a little bit later than that, but that's what the grant writer was, she was indicating, that's where, that's when it's, before in the past, it's come out, around September.
We have, so if, I guess during the budgeting process, if we can allocate in the future budget, that amount of money from it, of what we're currently going through, is that a sufficient process? We have enough time to figure if we can, because we have to have the budget in my junior.
I would suggest also, when we do that, that we approve one of these at a time. I don't know what that changes, I don't know if you'll still go ahead and do the questions and everything for Hatfield Park, you know, if we only approved task one.
Right.
But, but I would suggest that when we get around to, we're only initially looking at task one, because honestly, task two can be in a future fiscal year, because the projects aren't going to be completed in that, you know, quicker, quicker time.
Right, and task two, does that have any bearing on the land and water conservation fund?
Well, it'll be included in the application, but it'll be a much more rudimentary plan.
Yeah, I mean, so task two is, I mean, our thought was, let's show the vision for Hatfield with the pool, so then that's kind of a, that's, that's the approach we've taken on some other ones, where you got phase one through four, and it's all at the same park. Bud Rose is obviously a completely different park, so I think that would make sense to do that separately, but there may be some grant opportunities independent of land and water conservation that, that could go to that, so, yeah, they can, they can be split apart, and it won't have any impact.
If we feel that task two will have a significant impact on the land and water conservation fund, I would like, I, I would agree, I think separating those out would be important. And then we're looking at the forty-nine five at least, of finding in the budget. And, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know, does that look like it comes from ADA, does that look like that comes from somewhere else? I, I just think that there should be, in the process of approval with this, a budget minimum made of where this is paid from.
Well, I think we need to send the finance committee, and I think, and with the instructions that I want to know what we're already spending on parks.
Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is what we have mentioned this year.
Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is our current year budget, so, I mean, if, works out better than I thought it would, but if we were planning to, you know, transition to Parks and Recreation Commission and support them in any way in that transition, that would be a comparable dollar amount. But I do think we need to have the discussion, I, I would like to, if we're going to send this to committee and table it for now, we need to know what other considerations the council's going to want to have made.
I'm happy with everything in this, other than how do we pay for it? Splitting it up and how do we pay for it, my two, I like those.
This, this just approves the city manager to sign the agreement, and then say she has to sign it tomorrow, so, I mean, this is going to have to take council action, I mean, if we were to approve it, basically, she wouldn't sign an agreement until we're ready to do it, or there's money there. No, we've, we've told her she can sign it. Right, but this says that she is able to sign it, but does this say that if we vote on this, she can sign it tomorrow without our, with, not, with their knowing to what we know now, I mean, that, we need, she wouldn't probably.
She could, would she?
Yeah, could, would. Yes, but physically responsible, she probably wouldn't be signing anything that's not budgeted or anything, but like I said, this has to take council action at some point in time. The council action you're asking is for her to be authorized to sign it, which is an engagement of this firm to conduct the work, bringing two thousand dollars. You're still, you're still talking about how do you finance it, which seems to be at the heart of this issue, and you may want to have finance committee to look at it, and you may want to have a special meeting or something to discuss how you'd like to proceed, whether it's in parks or, or whatever, but, but once you, once you authorize her, they have a, a contract, they're authorized to engage for services, and they're not going to want to be derelict on that either, so they're going to want to move if they go to sign a contract, I see.
Yeah, I mean, so once the city walk on the city, we'll do, we'll have contracts, and typically, and, and it may be in a contract language, that's their contract language, but they will give us notice to proceed for certain tasks. So we're, we're only authorized to go through, you know, usually it's preliminary report. We'll go through that, and then they'll say, okay, now you've got authorization to, to proceed, but each of those. but each of those times it goes to council and it's approved. So, you know, once preliminary reports are approved, then they do another vote to proceed to final plan. So, yeah, I mean, it's usually a vote to go and then, to a certain point.
That's not a funding issue.
Yeah.
It's just how do we want to proceed here?
And I'm, I'm, I don't, you know, I don't care if we proceed tasks, but I don't think that needs to come back to council for every review, that's my opinion, but we, I mean, we don't even have an allocated dollar to spend, so I mean, we can't even start the first task until we've allocated those dollars.
I'd motion to table it, send it to the Finance Committee to determine funding.
Get my pen ready. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Dowling, and a second by Mr. Winters, to table discussion and action on the Bud Rose Parks Master Planning in an amount not to exceed $82,800 by Kimley Horn. Did I say everything?
That is for Hatfield and Bud Rose.
Or Hatfield and Bud Rose, yeah. Table item number nine. Send it to Finance Committee to determine funding options.
Realistically, I'd say we expect maybe this big, airline can be kind of hammered out maybe for next council meeting. I mean, the steps.
The more questions you provide in advance to Angelica, the more realistic it is that we'll have answers.
I know my goal would be we would have some method to be able to pass this at the latest by the next council meeting, because I do believe we need to do this, and we need to get it done. I'm not comfortable approving something that we don't have funding for.
And if it was possible to put like, you know, I mean, an amount that we're willing to spend on the maximum of this project, so that it's less open-ended, so we can make and set reasonable expectations for the popular.
And one thing that I could do, too, is I can break it out by subtasks, like, kind of like what we did on, on the pool, where it's, I mean, you, it'll be smaller chunks, so you can see how far do you get to get to the draft master plan.
I thought it would be an interesting concept that if we could approve the first part of the tasks, as a capital, like, let's see what he's able to do and drum up through community support, put together as a plan, and then if we like and think it's a reasonable and affordable option, then engage in the entirety of the contract, which, I mean, I'm okay engaging and then setting that stop if that's feasible.
Well, we'll do this, we can come back to the break now, of the task, and then that'll give you an idea of how far can you go through whatever task it is.
Well, and Derek, if I'm correct, the final master plan, that's not bid-ready, that's, that's not specs, that's not.
No, it's projects, it's dollar amounts, and it's a priority, so if it's Year Five, it costs X amount with this, you know, cost escalation, which, good luck projecting five years right now, but.
Shoot low.
So, but yeah, no, it's not bid-ready at that point, so it'd just be basically a list of projects.
This is something we're looking at. Finance Committee is going to commit to needing enough time to doing what we need before the next council meeting, I assume, right?
If you all are wanting to move forward with it by the next council meeting, then yes, we'll have to.
Whatever that pays. You're welcome. This is how we're keeping you around, by just making you work four times a day.
So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Dowling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Derek.
See you.
Bye. Item 10 is discussion and action to open a checking account for this Capital Reserve Fund. We, in 2017, council approved a Capital Reserve Fund, so they can set aside money for long-term capital improvement plan. Checking account was, has not been set up yet to do that, and so this action would cause that to happen.
I must have already played the questions, but I guess I jumped over, my bad.
I just didn't know what, are there any questions? Thank you.
What kept it from happening since 2017?
I don't think there was ever discussion of opening, unless I'm wrong.
At the time, and I don't know that it was a council action that caused this, but at the time, we had most of our, you know, funds like this just in full cash and on our charter accounts, and so it wasn't a different account. The reason that there's not been any, assuming it's zero, up until we started, it's really.
We have, I mean, whatever, I have to go look and see, there's a small portion of what we have sitting in our savings account that is dedicated to that from last year.
Yeah. So, up until when we started, until this council started specifying money for that purpose, I can only imagine it's because the spending was in other areas and wasn't prioritized for capital.
There was no funds to set aside.
I guess, is there a discussion on what type of account and stuff?
I would assume we go with a similar type of account that we have, that bears interest and.
Are we going to bid it out, or do we?
Not enough money to matter at this moment.
Typically, when we're looking at checking accounts, we're typically stuck with our, the bank that we currently have our, most of our checking and our savings accounts with because of ease of transferring funds into those accounts, it just makes it simpler to do. Whoever Finance Committee wishes.
How much money do we have in the reserve account?
In the reserve account or the savings? The savings account?
Well, the Capital Reserve Fund.
We don't have, that's what we're saying, we don't have any, I have to go look and see what we.
So, back in the past, maybe.
What we sent back this last year, we, we're still bid, go ahead.
If, and maybe this is more what, how much would we open that account with?
I guess, yeah.
I see what you're saying, so most of the accounts I would look at have a minimum of at least $2,500. They have to be kept in that balance, I think, depending on the interest rate that we get, there's smaller or larger amounts potentially if we wanted a higher interest rate, like, you could do $5,000 or $10,000 to your beginning balance, and that would increase the amount of interest you would accrue to those accounts, so.
I don't think that's what you're looking for, was it? How much is set aside in the savings account?
I'll have to look, just a second.
And what, is that savings account of the same bank it, the funds are at?
So, basically, we're moving it from the savings to this new account.
Some of that.
Some of that, okay.
So, in 2017, we had been in intentions, we never felt all clear.
I guess, what's your, what would cause us to be able to expend money from the Capital Reserve account that we're setting up?
Budgeted and approved by council?
Okay, so it's just, there's not, it's not like a, one of the savings ones that we have to.
It would typically have been money that was put into, like, just the general funds.
So, yeah, so anything, just, do we have any specific plans?
To fund.
So, it would have eighty, about $87,750, there's been some interest accrued since then, but, right now, there's more in that savings account, because that's what we've been setting aside, our airport payment, our airport payment as well, so, but what would be dedicated for capital improvement from last fiscal year is $87,750-ish dollars.
Presumably, an extra month in the budget line over that.
So, what we've been doing is our sales tax, we've been setting aside 5% of our sales tax every month into that savings account, and so when we reach our desired payment that we, we, excuse me, that we repay to the airport, then after that, we continue to set that 5% aside, and that's what, it's just.
Okay, that's right, okay.
And it'd be, like, where we went wrong with this when we passed it is there was no enforcement mechanism that required, it was just that we were going to do this, and there was a lot of assumptions made, that that's, that there was a, this is what we're going to do, and I do think that we need to revisit that going forward to readdress that and set it, that it's a set amount.
Mayor and I, Parker, I had that conversation last week, actually, that we'd like to resend this ordinance and stabilization ordinance back to Finance and Ordinance Committees where we need to make sure that we are doing what we said we were going to do essentially in those ordinances, and if not, changing them so that they appropriately reflect what we are doing.
Okay, and the action that we are not, or not doing is the opening up of those accounts? Or is that just?
That's what this aside.
This item is just to open the account so that we can set money aside for specifically for capital improvement in its own accounts, so we can monitor and see what's sitting there very easily. There's some other pieces in that ordinance that we passed in 2017 that I don't believe that we are upholding, and so that's why I'm saying I feel like that needs to be sent back to Finance and Ordinance Committees to make sure that those ordinances appropriately reflect what we are doing or what our intentions are.
Look at the budget retreat, I asked about, you know, since we're basically saving $12,000 a month, because of payments that we have paid off, I said something about, maybe since we don't have that obligation, maybe, and we've always kind of planned on it, where something like that could go in a reserve, so this would be possibly a place to possibly put that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the amount?
$87,750.
That's almost.
Are there any other questions? And if not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to open a checking account for the Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, and a second by Mr. Bowman, to open a checking account for the Capital Reserve Fund. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Winters?
I'd say.
Item 11, discussion and action to approve the February 2022 OGE bill in an amount not to exceed $63,044.86. We did something similar to this a few months ago, and this is multiple months, August through January, of streetlights, electricity. It's over Angelica's spending limit, therefore it requires council approval, it is budgeted, but the bill itself, for that many months, is exceeds her spending limit.
That is, that many months of the streetlights plus our regular bill for the rest of the city as well for last month. So, about the time, last time we approved a payment like this, we switched AP clerks, and so it wasn't something the new AP clerk was watching, so we've had a conversation. She's going to, in future months, make sure the street lighting is on bill, and if it's not, notify us and notify OGE so we can get that, so we don't run into this problem again. Just something.
So, basically, OGE thought that they hadn't been billing us?
Yes.
Came back and billed us?
Yes.
And that's what this is.
We have fair utility bill, just like we expect everyone else to.
We don't know, can we stiff them?
Unfortunately, they don't.
Yeah, but you know, it's dark.
Bring your headlight next time.
I'd motion to approve the February 2022 OGE bill in an amount not to exceed $63,044.86.
That's second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beard, to approve the February 2022 OGE bill in an amount not to exceed $63,044.86. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action to approve tourism tax payment to Western Sports Committee in an amount not to exceed $33,831. Connor, you want to?
This is the bull battle that's been going on for four or five years now. They, I think they came to us originally with like $36,000 after discussion. We did approve the $33,831.
Have they received funding in the past from the tourism tax?
Every, every year, the amount they ask for has gone up a little, a little bit each year, but the event is, it's gone from a one-day deal to a two-day deal, and both those days are full, with the evenings full, so the increase in the ask has been met, you know, especially by turning it into a two-day deal, putting people in hotels, and it reaches tenants similar to a car show.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the Tourism Tax Commission has approved this, it's within their ability to approve, all we're doing is just simply approving, cutting the check.
Yeah, it's simple, I'd rather you to do what they already approved.
I'd entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve the tourism tax payment to Western Sports Committee in an amount not to exceed $33,831.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, and a second by Mr. Martin, to approve the tourism tax payment to the Sports Committee in an amount not to exceed $33,831. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. Item 13 is discussion and action to enter into executive session, present to 25, or A 250 S 307 B 2, to discuss contract negotiations with IAFF, Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma, and B 250 S 307 B 4, confidential communication between a public body and its attorney concerning pending investigation claim or action.
I'll motion to enter into executive session.
My second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, and a second by Mrs. Beard, to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, now, that's council members, legal counsel, clerk to remain, and we'll let the public and the paper know when we're coming out. Item 15 is action on contract negotiations with IAFF, Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma, and there is no action at this time. Item 16, remarks and inquiries by council members. Angelica hit on it, and I'm not going to be long with this, but I do appreciate everyone's participation on Saturday. I really thought that was very productive when we had our budget retreat. I do think, you know, we've got a lot of work to do on our budget yet, but I think we're at least up to a good start, and so, thank you all for taking time out of your Saturday, and thank you, Angelica, because to have every, to have the auditors here today, to have the city council meeting today, to have the budget retreat on Saturday, and to have the mishaps that you were not causing, but present at over the weekend.
Did not cause those, thanks, Derek.
You did not cause those, I'm not blaming you for the fire or the water line, but to be present at all of that this week, thank you. It's not anything less than what we have come to expect out of you, but it's more than maybe what we should expect out of anyone, so, thank you. Those are my comments.
Even the employee get together when they're at Drake Park, I was good, seeing them all, like, they all appreciated and stuff, and I don't know about the little game they play.
You're no fun, ready.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members? All right, we're adjourned. City Council's adjourned. We'll open the, call to order the regular Alba Utility Authority meeting. Roll call, please. Whenever you're ready.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to dis. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda. The place for discussion has the next item on the regular agenda and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, and payroll expenses of forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and three cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item five, discussion and action to approve change order number three, removing the manual transfer switch from the specifications and reducing the cost of the total project by eight hundred dollars. That's the water well, um, offset well, uh, project. Um, if you'll remember, it came in over budget anyway, we knocked some things out of that project in the first place. And, um, we're taking it out of the project because of delivery, isn't it?
Yes, so the ETA, we don't have an estimated arrival date for this part. It's the, um, the plug that allows us to plug a generator into the water well so it can operate when we don't have electricity present. Um, there's literally no estimated arrival date for this part. It's not, it's not, um, necessary for the well to operate and function. However, um, in order for us to be able to close out the grant, we have to meet the bid specifications and we need to close that grant out. By making this change order, it allows us to close the project, it allows us to close out the grant, and we can receive the fifty-five thousand dollars from re, that we've, um.
Been awarded.
Been awarded. And so Bill had suggested, Bill Myers had suggested that it would just be simpler to remove it from the project. Um, it's still, it's not going to stop the part from coming, when it gets here, we just pay, um, Hoppin and U-Bank to come and install the part, so. Mostly just to allow us to close the grant, huh?
I'd motion to approve change order number three, removing the manual transfer switch from the specifications and reducing the cost of the total project by eight hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beard to approve change order number three, reducing the total cost by eight hundred dollars. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, and we will adjourn the utility authority, next item is to call the order of the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. When you're ready, Heather, let's roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda. The place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of six thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, and payroll expenses of thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Winters to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
We are adjourned.